So item fourteen.
Item fourteen, Mayor.
Yeah.
This has to do with the Economic Development Commission, I mean Committee, that you all recall in the spring we reestablished.
Item fourteen, yeah.
Item fourteen. The Economic Development Committee. And so we are bringing it back because we need to pass an ordinance that rationalizes the terms between the council members and the commissioner members because the terms for the Economic Development Committee members are four years and during that period of time, a council member could change over. And so we needed to update the terms so that-
The commissioner can change over.
When council members come up for reelection, you know, they could change over and that council member could be a commissioner, I mean, could be a member of the committee. And so when they changed over, they would need to rotate off the committee because they would no longer be representing the city council on the committee. And so we needed to change it so their terms would be reevaluated every year depending on the outcome of the next election. And so that's what-
Well, maybe I introduce that. I think it was with discussion with city clerk. It's not really have to do with council election. It's because commissioner terms are every four years and every two years we appoint their stagger term. So originally, the representative from each commission also has a four-year term. That means their four-year term might be partial term because of their term on the commission. And then when talking with city clerk, I think it makes more sense, this kind of committee assignment from a commission usually is one year. So the commission would be able to appoint a representative every year. Yeah, it was not have to do with the council election. It's because commission appointment is, we do it every two years each time for a four-year term. So, yeah.
That's correct, Mayor, council commissioners.
Yeah, so that was the recommendation from city clerk's office that this makes more sense.
Yes, because, yes, the commissioners, the appointed commissioners may not, would not be able to fulfill their full term because they would be off the commission by the time that that term ended.
And then during that time, there were some community members were concerned about the losing of retail because of a lot of development project. So then the idea was maybe land use has, especially on preservation of retail, might have a lot to do with our economical development. So there was a thought of maybe a planning commission representative might make sense to be on the Economic Development Committee. But then we initially appointed the sustainability. And then I think some other people also suggested maybe Parks and Rec Commission might be more, should be considered. And so we currently have TIC and sustainability. And then the idea was maybe planning and park. So one idea that has been floated around is maybe because of the enthusiasm about Economic Development Committee now, two years overdue, I think I'm excited about that. So one idea that's floated around that I'm willing to consider is maybe we have an eleven-member economic committee and we have one rep from sustainability, one from planning, one from TIC, and one from Parks and Rec. And then together, we can brainstorm ideas about how to have better economic development activities in Cupertino. So, and I consulted with the city manager to see if such an eleven-member committee is manageable. And I think Tina has-
Yes, Mayor, as long as it's, you know, it's an odd number, which it is, eleven would be manageable compared to nine.
Yeah, so that's something I'm willing to consider. So you can, so I'd like to flow that idea out first before you make your comment. And, yeah? Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Then we'll take public comment. Oh, sorry, council member Fu.
Yeah, no, I was just hoping that you could elaborate a little bit more on what the full membership would be at eleven members, just so it's clear.
City attorney, do you have that list? I believe we currently have four, we have five at-large members and then two from each, from sustainability and TIC right now. And five is, there are certain industry sectors, right? So with, so right now we have, sorry, right now we have, wait, right now we have-
We have, currently, we have two city council members.
All right.
One technology sector business representative, one retail small business representative, one hospitality tourism sector representative, one education sector representative, and one commercial real estate representative. So there are five industry representatives. And then we currently have, in the current ordinance, a planning commissioner and a technology, information, and communications commissioner. So there are four members of the committee that are either council members or commissioners and five industry representatives.
Current, you mean the proposed, the ones on the agenda?
And-
The current one we adopted last time was sustainability and TIC.
Correct, but the same, this is the number of commissioners. Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah, so it's five plus two council member, two commissioner. Now we have nine. And because of the strong interest, we can have eleven. San Jose, I believe, has eleven council members. So as long as it's manageable by staff, I think we can consider that.
Sure, so I was going to offer, if you did want to contain the number a little bit, you could simply reduce the number of council members to one from two. That way, you don't have people who are permanently brown acted with each other and then you can add another commissioner from a different commission.
Okay. Or we just don't have council members. Council member Mohan.
Thank you, Mayor. My concern with this is that it seems to be getting more and more unwieldy. The bigger the group, the less work that will get done. And already, we're looking at five into seven, nine, nine committee members. And now we're looking at either adding one more or two more, which just makes it almost impossible to get anything done. I am, right now, in favor of just leaving it as it is, leaving the Sustainability Commission as part of the Economic Development Committee. And I'm a little uncomfortable with diverting responsibilities that belong to other committees to the Planning Commission. This would be the second time we're doing this in the last couple of months, and I'm not sure that's the way. I want to go.
Any other question? If no question, we'll go to public comment and then we come back to deliberation. Council member Fu and, or council member Wong.
Just as a quick aside on the topic of the sheer number of members to the committee, one of the things that I'm sure you've seen as an issue in a lot of our interjurisdictional bodies that we belong to is establishing quorum. And the larger that a body like this becomes, the harder it is to get to quorum. Quorum isn't so much of an issue for city council meetings where, as you brought up, the point of San Jose correctly has eleven members of its city council, but, you know, they've all been elected to those positions, they all ran for them, they all want to be there, they're all paid, they all have staff. That's not true for all of the commission members. I think that that's something else to consider there, is that it can be very difficult to get everyone to show up.
Thank you. Council member Wong.
I just wanted to make sure we, the public knew exactly what's in the current list on the committee, so if someone could just read that back so everybody's on the same page.
The current list on the committee is two council members, one technology sector business representative, one retail small business representative, one hospitality tourism sector representative, one education sector representative, one commercial real estate representative, one sustainability commissioner, one technology, information, and communications commissioner.
Maybe it's easier-
And two city council members, correct?
Yeah, I started out with the two city council members.
So I'm sharing the red line, figuring that's on the agenda. Right now, we have nine members. So this might be easier, two city council, five industry sector, and two commission And as for the question of quorum, actually, I heard the opposite about if we have less members and when many people couldn't attend, then you have, we had commission that has like three people meeting and that you really cannot really have a good discussion with solid home members. So, yeah, it goes both ways. So if, I'm thinking let's go to public comment and then come back for the, to the council.
Yes, Mayor, I currently have one request to speak in community hall and I see one request virtually. I have the Sustainability, Sustainability Commission. I was, are you electing to consolidate your time to have one speaker representing the group? Okay. So you may have up to two addition, two minutes per person, up to 10 minutes. So I see three of you, so you'll have six minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We're the Sustainability Commission for Cupertino and we thank you for the opportunity to speak. We met yesterday, we called a special meeting yesterday to discuss this agenda item. We feel that it was important enough to call a special meeting. The commission made a unanimous vote to recommend that we include, we don't remove the Sustainability Commission, we include sustainability and the Planning Commission in the Economic Development Committee in order to give Cupertino a competitive edge ensuring decisions are environmentally sound, business savvy, and to support the commercial components of the Climate Action 2.0. We understand that while it's important that the Planning Commission be here, we suggest adding that 10th position, but we request to stay on the commission, or on the committee, excuse me, on the committee. That's it, actually. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we have one member of the public requesting to speak virtually. That is San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I am opposed to the changes to expand this. I, you know, I've been somewhat mild on the support for the addition of these committees. I think we're adding additional burden on staff. I think we need to be mindful of how much load we place on staff with these things and what they achieve. And a committee of 11 is going to create an even larger burden on staff that really is not adding value. And to that effect, I would like to request that you consider an amendment to this motion to not put any commissioner at all on this committee, but instead to appoint at-large community members and you select two from the community based on their vision and contributions towards economic development. So there is no reason really to have any commissioner and nor is the commission sort of the prerequisite to contribute to this. What is a prerequisite is community members that have the passion and the vision to drive economic development interest for our cities. So please consider keeping this as small as possible and really focusing on the mission, which is really to bring economic development to the city through an assortment of business interests, community members and staff members, while doing it with the least impact to staff. I would actually oppose the formation of this committee if you're putting 11 people on it. And this is not, you know, an opportunity for someone to claim a title as a commissioner saying that they're, you know, X or Y on such and such a committee. So please focus on staff load and focus on the outcomes rather than these committees. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, no additional requests to speak. Oh, I do see another hand raised, actually. Lisa Warren, welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I'll admit that I've only halfway listening to this subject because I'm working also. But I, I tend to agree with San about having more just general members of the public involved too, especially if the number is going to remain that high. But again, I wasn't paying that close of attention, so if I'm misspeaking because I missed something important for that not being the case, I apologize. But it takes a village and it's nice to have people come into something like this that aren't already involved in the city in another way. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Let's bring this back. And what does, anyone have comment on the composition? I feel there is value for, maybe I'll just, I feel at-large member, we already have five from different industry sector. And there is value to have a rep from a commission because it really gets that entire commission involved and then they can keep track of, maybe commission can, as a whole, can provide ideas to the Economic Development Committee. So I'm excited that there is so much interest and we can, this is a new commission, we can try it, I'll see if it works. I did consult with the staff whether 11 member would not be manageable. I think city manager said you had experience with a large commission. Could you elaborate more a bit on that?
Yes, Mayor, I think the 11 is manageable, but if we're talking about composition and if there's interest among council, right, like what the council member participation could look like, you know, we could keep the number at nine and still have four commissions, but it's totally up to council for discussion. I know Daniel, our Economic Development Manager, has also managed a committee in another city with the same 11 number. Yes, he's nodding, is it?
So you have experience managing committee with 11 members.
Yes, I would say though, you know, the larger the number, obviously, it's a little bit more work, but there are economic development committees with a large number of members.
So we could consider maybe removing the two council members and have four representative from four different commissions, then it's still nine. So what do other people think about it? Council member Mohan and vice mayor, oh, sorry, I don't know who's hand. I think council member Wong's hand was up before the public comment. And then council member Mohan and Fu and then vice mayor. Okay.
I would actually recommend, I mean, if you want to get it to a smaller committee, I would recommend getting rid of the council members and the commissioners and having it just an industry-focused committee. I think we already have, if you're interested in participating, just come to the meeting. I think you need a small nimble committee. Our economic development challenges require people moving fast and people actually doing work. Having too many people in a committee at this point is not going to increase the level of work. You're interested in helping the volunteer and help with that, participate in the meetings. But right now, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things where you don't need other cross-commissions in here. It just adds more to the complexity. And if you don't need council members, that's fine, too. I mean, someone can take an active interest and then just participate in it because there's a lot of work that has to be there. What a question I wanted to ask is, does it, do we have to have committees in the sense that do council members have to be part of these committees? Is that a requirement for a committee versus a commission? And so that's my only question to the city attorney.
No, you don't have to have a council member participating on a committee.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Fu and, oh, okay, yeah, okay. Council member Fu.
So, you know, I'd be also okay with removing any of the council member participation from the committee. One of the reasons for that simply being that, as I go back and think about some of the early discussions of the formation of this committee as a codified entity, there was some, a lot of background discussion and some discussion on the dais on the topic of whether or not it was really appropriate to have council members there in the first instance because they would tend to dominate the discussion. I think that's, that's a serious risk and if you want to actually get input from people who are sectoral experts or folks from industry in general or other commissioners, I think you want to be able to give them the space to breathe without a council member necessarily being right there on the dais with them. And, you know, I'll just note to, to council member Wong's point with regard to this being called a committee, certainly, our general nomenclature has been that if it doesn't involve a council member, we generally call it a commission. I think the only things that we've ever called committees have always had a council member on them, but that's, to my knowledge, not a hard and fast rule. It's simply a convention, seems to be widely followed. So we might give, give thought to the name if we're not going to have any, any council members on it.
Okay. Vice mayor, do you, um, vice mayor.
Thank you. So the Economic Development Committee, the question about whether it was still an ad hoc committee or was it a standing committee was something I raised with our prior city manager, Deb Feng. And the committee had begun, there's meeting minutes going back to 1996. And I'll give you an example roster. Here's the roll call from 2012 so that you can get a sense, there were always city council members on, on this committee, but the roll call shows city staff and you might recognize some of these names. Carol Atwood, Tim Borden, Tracy Caton, Aaron Cook, David Knapp, Mark Linder, Arti Srivastava. Chamber members, Kevin McClellan, Darcy Paul, John Zarelli, Mark Matsumoto, Maria Streetby. City council, you add Rod Sinks and Oren Mahoney. Planning commission, Winnie Lee, absent Mike Folks and Mike Rhodey. That would be Apple and Santill Property or actually Valco representatives at that time. So that was a very full roll call and I don't know what their composition was at that time. Prior to the committee ending, I believe it was four staff members, four chamber members, and two members of the city council, possibly a planning commissioner. So the issue was that it wasn't codified and so it took a couple of years to come up with this composition. And we had conducted interviews at the end of 2022 and we had tremendous interest in the committee and really, really excellent applicants. So I hope they do, the members of the public that fit into these various sectors, I hope they do apply again. And we were, we were ready to begin that committee to the point of having the city council members on there and the planning commissioner. I think especially when you're looking at land use issues, such as some kind of an economic development zone, that you need the experience of somebody in, that has some land use knowledge to weigh in. As with any committee, such as the audit committee, which has two council members on it, there is not an issue of dominance because you have individuals who have expertise in their particular sectors, who have that information to bring to the table. And so I don't particularly see that as a problem. I think it helps as well so that you have council members that understand what, where you can go with certain ideas, what's possible and not possible and where, and can get assistance from staff. So I am, I would be very reluctant to not have a council member present while these discussions are going through. Otherwise, you're going to be surprised by, you could be surprised by some of the suggestions that come out of that committee without some guidance. And I do like the idea of the change for the plant and commissioner, adding the planning commissioner. So personally, I would be, and I'm hearing, you know, different ideas against this, but I would personally prefer to retain sustainability, have a planning commissioner, and then add the Parks and Rec. So moving it to 11 individuals, which would involve an edit of 2.96010 and 2.96020. So 010B and 020A, which was regarding the terms of office, so it need to include sustainability and Parks and Rec. And same with the edit to 2.96010B. So that, that would be my preference. And I hope that individuals had a chance to go look through the meeting minutes starting 1996 onward and get a sense for the types of things the Economic Development Committee had previously worked on. It's, it's very enlightening and I think it'll help moving forward for topics to discuss.
Council member Mohan.
I would be in favor of eliminating the two council members from this committee and leaving the rest as it is. The five representatives from the various sectors, one sustainability commission member and one TIC commission member. That would make it seven.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the trip down the memory lane that I remember. So, yeah, this was evolved from the old Economic Development Committee. And it wasn't codified, but I did remember there were two council members and a planning commissioner, some staff and the council members. And then, so we were trying to make it, but then it wasn't the brown acted committee and there was not a fixed number of members. So we were trying to codify this to, to make it more structured. And that's why council members, two council members were included. And if, if for everyone who is interested, I encourage you to look up the 2016, I think that we have, we have done an economic strategy plan, economic development strategy plan. I think it's 2018, yeah. In that plan, there were a few proposals. A lot of these proposals actually would require planning commission review and council member review in terms of the policy that it would produce. For example, the mobile vendor, that came out of that. And also, there was one proposal of considering a specific economic zone for Bab Road area. And there were others, over the years, people have proposed, maybe we need a special, start on a workspace for to promote startup, then some of these would require a special planning permit. So we do need at least planning or, and then with city council member there, maybe it's more efficient that we could actually bring or have discussions that can be brought to the council to implement more quickly than without council members. So 11 is a large number, but maybe we should try it out for the next two years. And with the 11-member council, I'm excited about the involvement of commissioners because that really is a committee where we are bringing a lot of interest in the city together to develop our economics. to develop our economics. So, so, yeah, I'm in favor of adding two more, so we have 11 members. So any other comment from council members? Then, then maybe I'll just make the motion that we bring this back in the next council meeting with the amendment for where the, we will have representatives from four commissions, the Sustainability, Planning, Tick, and Parks and Rec, and for a one-year term each. That would be recommended by the commission and then rectified by city council. And the rest would remain the same.
More second?
Any other comment? So?
Yeah. Why are we waiting another week to make that decision? Is there anything different or another session to get there?
Waiting what?
Is there second reading that we need to do? Is that the issue?
If we change today, we need to do another first reading.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure so the public knows.
Yeah, that's why we have to bring this back for another first reading with any change. City Attorney.
Yes. May I just make one recommendation? If everybody has a one-year term, then every year, there's the chance that the whole commission is redone? Or the whole committee is redone?
Only four. So four representative would, might be reappointed.
The industry people will, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, oh, but the council member could have different assignment, yeah, that's true.
I would say I, I oppose having the commissioners on there. I think that's just making a very wieldy committee. I think we, we've overburdened this committee. I would be okay with having the two council members on there or not having them. And I, I really defer to my other council members as to how they feel in this, but we've just made a committee so unwieldy that you'd be lucky to get anything done. That's, that's, that's my corporate experience, and I would tell you that if you can get to smaller, more nimble committees, you're, you're better off. I do understand the need for input, and, you know, I, I think you can get that input through participation, but if you really want to get stuff done and brainstorming here, you'd want a smaller committee.
So what do you think? Or it could be commission representatives are not voting members? No. I think let's try it out, right? Let's try it out. And if it really is cumbersome to work, we can always adjust, yeah. Okay. Please, so let's support this, let's get this, roll it out. We, by the way, the commission interview will be July 16th, and then the deadline to, for application is July 8th, city clerk?
July 7th.
July 7th is the deadline for the five industry representatives. And then we are hoping the commission would select a representative by the mid-July, then we would, likely the first meeting will be in September.
Mayor, may I, may I have clarification on the motion on the table that the council is adopting this ordinance, a first reading as presented tonight, and then staff will come back at a later date with a, a different ordinance?
No, I think we are not adopting as is today. We will just request to bring back a first reading.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah. And then we will have, have the second reading on the 15th.
But will you be voting on your motion tonight?
Yeah, so I'm hoping to have the support of the other council members to try this out. I know it's new, and that's, and, but that's, put all the heads together and make it work.
I just want to clarify also that the city attorney doesn't think that this changes are substantial enough to warrant coming back for a new first reading? If, if the commission composition will now be 11 instead of nine? No, no, we will have a first reading on July 1.
Yeah.
So the, the, the council is now instructing the city attorney to go back and revise the, the ordinance update to bring, brought back on July 1 with the second on July 15. Thank you.
My point of inquiry is, if we vote for this today, do we have the option to change the composition in a second reading?
Then that would be, then we would need to do another first reading, right?
That would start you over at the beginning.
That's why I want to make sure, okay?
Yeah.
Because I, I, I think this is very unwieldy.
Yeah.
Pardon, through, through the mayor? So the, the Economic Development Committee that I read the names of, that was a, a team of 17. And ordinarily, it was around 10 or 11 previously.
Oh, okay. Okay, then that's, and Councilmember Fruein.
I, I, I want to just state that I, I generally agree with Councilmember Wong that this is getting very large and, and out of hand. At the same time, I, I don't want us to be engaged in an overlong discussion of, of the topic when we can and, and should be experimenting with things from time to time. So, you know, I will go ahead and, and support the effort today. That said, I'm not entirely sold on the notion that I will support it when it comes to us on a revised first reading. So you've got until at least then to try to convince me.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon, question through the mayor. Would Councilmember Fruein accept the composition today that's already in the agenda? And that one did switch out?
No, I, I think that sustainability should be there.
Okay, so your preferences, okay, I can, I can agree with that thinking if the council members remain because my issue with the planning commissioner was with regards to land use. But you have council members who are pretty well-versed in land use. So one could argue that that is being taken care of, that concern. And then, so if, if it were to revert back to sustainability from planning, would you be interested in supporting that, Councilmember Fruein?
I'd, I'd be okay with that. I would also be okay with the alternative composition that I offered at the beginning of removing one council member and adding back in the sustainability commissioner.
And swapping one council member for a planning commissioner?
Correct. At least from the, so from the existing ordinance, right? Not the one that's proposed, but the existing ordinance which includes sustainability, then you would be striking one existing council member and adding a planning commissioner in that person's place.
Through the mayor, I see that has merit. I can support either of those suggestions.
So one council member and one planning?
Yes.
And then the rest remain the same? I mean, even, even if we keep the current composition, we still need to bring it back for another first reading, which, which only changed the term of the commissioners. So we do need to bring it back anyway. So, okay, so we are accept, so we are amending the motion to, okay. I accept the proposal to amend the motion to have one council member, three commissioners, one from planning, one from sustainability, and one from tick. And then the, the term of each commission is one year.
More second?
Okay.
Should I say I accept that amendment?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's a vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruein?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
No.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion as amended carries with Mohan and Wong voting no.
Okay, thank you. And so this would come back for another first reading on, on the 1st of July. Next, item 15, we have the options on preservation and anti-displacement of below-market rate units. And my understanding is this is part of the housing element. We need to approve the BMR anti-displacement policy. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the community development team here to present this item, and I will turn it over to Director Ben Fu.
Thank you, Acting City Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're here to discuss, present to you some options on preservation and, and anti-displacement of the BMR units, and also consider pending your discussion here, the approval of, of a policy. With me have Nikki Vu, a senior, you're a senior housing coordinator. Be making the presentation and afterwards will be available for questions. So with that, I'll hand it off to Nikki. Nikki?
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, Madam Mayor and the City Council. My name is Nikki, and the item I have before you tonight, if approved, is a resolution to amend the procedures manual for administering deed-restricted units, also known colloquially as the BMR administration manual, to include an anti-displacement policy for low-income tenants residing in expiring units that are within market rate developments. So first on the agenda, I'll be talking about some background on the displacement, specifically what type of displacement these households are facing, what is causing it, and then some demographic information on who are these tenants, who are these households, what are the units that are we expecting to losing, so that we know what tailor-made, you know, policy we need to be making to adequately address this displacement. Next, I'll be going into some of the alternative strategies that we studied and considered as part of this process. And while they may not be included in the proposed policy tonight, we did see value in continuing to study them for the future when looked at through different lenses and for different types of displacement not being addressed tonight. And then finally, we will go into the proposed low-market rate anti-displacement policy that is before you tonight, including the two components that were brought before the Housing Commission during a study session in 2024, and talking about the feedback that we got from the Housing Commission during that meeting. So first, looking at the background, right? Our below-market rate inclusionary policy is a policy within our housing mitigation manual that guides us on how to develop affordable housing and collect fees related to affordable housing from market rate developments. Specifically, it requires that any market rate housing development must include 50% 15, sorry, percent of the units that they develop as affordable, meaning that these units would be restricted to only having low-income tenants that are qualified by HUD definition, meaning 80% of area meeting income, but also that they can only charge rents that are affordable up to that rate. These are affordable units that are administered through RISE Housing, right? Our low-market rate administrators, but are ultimately owned by for-profit entities. And this is important to remember because upon expiration of these units, they could be foreseeably facing disproportionate rent increases in rent. The change from an affordable rental rate to a market rental rate would be somewhere between 200 to 250%. When this program first started, each development was made with an expiration date of 30 years. In the 1999 amendment of the housing mitigation manual, this was changed to 99 years. So any housing development built after 1999 foreseeably would not have this issue, but for every housing development built before 1999, potentially, we could be seeing a low-income household, qualified, vetted low-income household facing a rental increase that they would by definition not be able to afford. And thus, they would be facing displacement due to disproportionately high rent increases. For your benefit, we've included a table of all the expiring rental units that we expect to see until 2040. In total, we see 114 households we expect to see expire by then. But also important to note that the first round of expiring units is scheduled according to their BMR agreements to occur in July 2026, so next year, which makes this a very high priority for us to enact some sort of policy now in order to have some sort of policy to protect these tenants when they are set to expire within a year. So next, we will look at the tenant data. In the staff report, we included tenant data on the first three expiring units, sorry, expiring properties. That's because we needed more time essentially to collect data on all the properties. So this is the more accurate and more complete data. First, looking at the age of the primary tenants, meaning this is the person who applied for these units, we see that for the most part, to, over two-thirds of the people living in these units are age 50 and above, meaning they are either already retired or very, very close to being retired. And additionally, we see that the household size of these, of these units are only about a third, one person, with the rest of the two-thirds of them making up families that are with two members or more, meaning we're not just rehousing individuals, we're really trying to rehouse families that are going to need, you know, their own units. Next, looking at the unit data, we look at the tenancy of the average person in one of these expiring units. For the most part, half of these individuals have been living in their units for four years or less. The rest, there's a distribution for five years or more spread out throughout the rest of the graph. But overall, we see about half people living in their four years or less, meaning that's what we would define as a new recipient of a BMR program, with those living there five or longer, meaning a more long-time recipient of the BMR program. And then finally, we look at the quality of the units. Upon restriction, we see most of them are, well, really, four-fifths of them are in what we would consider a good condition, ready to be rented out again. One-fifth of them needing some sort of upgrade. The most common one that was reported was replacement of the flooring and carpeting. There are two housing element strategies that touch upon anti-displacement that we will be adjusting with this policy. The first is HE 3.3.2, which committed staff to first ensure that all these property owners are, are following proper legal noticing procedures with these expiring rental BMR units, meaning they're sending out the proper notices to all their tenants, making sure that they're aware of their upcoming expiration, and then also to attempt to preserve these units. If that's not feasible, then work with tenants and other organizations to try to mitigate this displacement. Or in other words, if we can't preserve the units, try to protect the people within them. The other housing element strategy that touches upon this is HE 3.3.6, that commits staff to study rent stabilization as an anti-displacement policy and other potential anti-displacement policies with the goal of trying to create a new policy that protects at least 100 households. So enacting this BMR anti-displacement policy would foreseeably help us further our state commitments, right? And ensure that we meet our housing element goals for both policies at the same time. We're not alone or unique in having this issue. There are many other cities that are also studying anti-displacement at the same time or have already enacted anti-displacement policies. So this policy was created in contribution with collaboration, with talking with, well, first studying other cities' policies, but also talking with them to study, you know, best practices, what worked and what didn't. And there are many other concurrent actions still ongoing. So this is kind of an ongoing process, not just for us, but for many other cities around the Bay Area that are also committed to studying anti-displacement through their own housing elements as well. So next, let's talk about some of the alternatives that were explored as part of this study. First, because we are committed to in the housing element, we looked at acquisition-preservation, which is the strategy to try to purchase these units and then re-restrict them as being part of our BMR program. And first, we run into a roadblock, right? Because these are rental units, we cannot separately purchase them from the buildings in which they're in, which means this would become a cost-prohibitive strategy. We would have to buy entire buildings in order to preserve just 15% of the BMR units. Using the McClelland Terrace acquisition as a case study, number one, because that occurred in Cupertino in the year 2025, and coincidentally was and coincidentally, was owned by Prometheus Development, that acquisition went forward for $66.7 million. That's not what we have in our BMR fund currently. If we were to assume all things held constant and then scale it for the amount of units we'd have to purchase to preserve all 114 BMR households, we would have to be spending around $525 million. It's just not a financially feasible strategy currently for this type of displacement, so we chose not to proceed with it at this time. The next strategy that we're committed to researching was rent stabilization. This was also mentioned in the housing element. This strategy would be to try to limit rent increases of the expiring BMR units to try to keep them at affordable levels. Unfortunately, upon examination, we found that the Tenant Bill of Rights, State Bill of Rights law in 2019, also known as AB 1482, which caps most market-rate units to have a rental increase of only 5% plus the CPI increase, explicitly exempts expiring BMR units from this protection. And furthermore, it actually also explicitly states that expiring BMR rental units should be allowed to return to what they call the natural rent rate. It's been since amended to say re-establishing initial rent, but it's in effect the same thing, meaning that we could not legally enact rent stabilization for these expiring units without running a foul estate law, meaning it would not be permissible for this type of anti-displacement. However, we could still study rent stabilization for trying to limit displacement for non-deed-restricted rental units as part of like a more broader citywide anti-displacement strategy, right? For just renters in general. So while it's not being pursued at this time or tonight, it could continue to be studied when studied under a different context. Next, we have deposit/fee regulations. This was an idea that was actually brought to us by a housing commissioner when we presented to them during December 19 study session. The idea was to try to require primary source documentation before a landlord tries to charge their tenants for any maintenance costs, the idea being that it would lower housing costs overall by trying to limit unexpected fees for housing. This is an interesting idea. It doesn't necessarily address the disproportionate high rent increases which these households are facing, so we chose not to pursue it at this time. But similar to the last strategy, this is an issue that affects all tenants, both on the BMR rental list and otherwise. So this could still be studied as part of like a citywide anti-displacement strategy. Next, we have eviction/legal defense. This is a very broad term for trying to enact any kind of policy that prevents eviction, number one, and tries to defend tenants when they're faced with unlawful detainers. So some examples of this that some other cities have done was to expand, right, the just cause eviction protections in AB 1482 or to reinforce no-net-loss provisions. And then the second part to this would be to fund a low-income legal organization to represent, you know, evicted tenants and enforce these laws, right? Because oftentimes, when you enact a new policy, people aren't quite aware of these laws, and they can, you know, get an eviction notice anyways. This would be how you enforce this policy. Similar to the last two, this doesn't quite address the disproportionate high rent increase that these units are facing. These households will not be facing eviction, right? They're facing rent increase. And so this would be an important issue that affects all tenants. And similar to the last two, it still could be studied as part of a citywide anti-displacement strategy, but it's just not being proposed as part of the strategy tonight. The next alternative we looked at was using the county BMR waitlist, trying to rehouse tenants in the county waitlist as a priority. We tried to negotiate with county staff during a meeting in May to have this included, but unfortunately, we were informed that the county actually does not have a centralized BMR waitlist. When people want to apply for a BMR unit in the county, they have to individually apply to different properties, which means in order to enact this policy, we would have to negotiate with individual developers often, meaning that we would probably have to provide some sort of monetary incentive for them to agree to this. So that would be a fiscal impact to consider. And then also, this policy would really only be enforceable if this county project is also geographically located within the city of Cupertino. Because if we know that the households we are rehoming are all low-income households, then rehousing them to a geographic area outside of the city could be seen as an exclusionary fair housing concern, which would make it non-enforceable. And then the last alternative we also considered was anti-displacement incentives. This would be for staff to negotiate with these property owners to extend the affordability on these properties for these expiring BMR units in exchange for development incentives on their future projects within the city of Cupertino. Overall, we thought this idea did have some potential, but it's highly dependent, right, on the developer's desire for future projects in Cupertino and also for these agreements to be executed prior to expiration. And as we mentioned, the first round of expiration is expected to happen in 2026. So this could be something that we can continue to do as part of staff work plan, if directed by council, but it can only happen really as projects come in, right? For new future projects, and if these projects also happen to be coincidentally owned by, you know, any of these property owners as well. So we think that we could do this kind of supplementally in addition to the BMR anti-displacement policy, which we have proposed for you tonight. And with that, I'd like to go into what is the BMR anti-displacement policy that we have proposed tonight, what we've brought before you today. Development of this policy was not done in a vacuum. We consulted both RISE Housing, our BMR administrator, as well as West Valley Community Services. They are our core service provider to low-income households in Cupertino, as well as our former BMR administrators. In addition to this, we consulted with many neighboring cities, all the aforementioned cities on the previous slide. This involved both like meeting with them in anti-displacement study sessions, but also reading their policies, comparing and contrasting what worked and what didn't. And then finally, we also brought our proposed policy before the Housing Commission during December 19, during a special meeting in which they voted unanimously to recommend two components of a kind of like a dual policy, which we have brought before you tonight, substantially pretty much in the same form. We also proposed, we also brought this policy before the public during a public outreach event on April 21, where we received mostly positive feedback from the people in attendance. So with that, the first component of the BMR anti-displacement policy is to give them waitlist priority to rehome tenants in the city BMR waitlist. So the city of Cupertino does have a centralized BMR waitlist, and that system also already has a priority point system where we award Cupertino residents, Cupertino employees, and Cupertino workers extra priority points to get housed quicker. So we can build upon this existing system and amend the program to add three additional points for a new category called displaced BMR renters, where if someone is a tenant of a BMR unit that's expiring within 12 months, they can reapply into the program and get rehoused with priority. We would also amend the application procedures to allow BMR renters to apply anytime rather than having to wait typically in the October application period, so that way they can take full advantage of being in this high-priority category. So we provide an example of what that would look like. So the way people get placed into a BMR unit, right? They get first grouped by how many preference points they are able to be awarded, and then they are assigned a random number, which kind of gives them their waitlist position, right? So you can see at the top, all the people who got four priority points, sorry, four priority points, they're all at the top, and then they're all given a random number, and so that makes them, you know, number two, number three, number four in the list. And then below them, all the people that have three priority points get listed. The same priority list is used throughout an entire year. So we can't expect that we would be able to rehouse all the people that get the highest amount of priority points, but we would still also be able to house people that do not get all the priority points, right? Because as we reuse the same list throughout the year, we would eventually work our way down the list. So even though this would give these people the highest priority, we would not be leaving out other people, right, on the BMR waitlist as well. The second component that we have in this proposed policy is relocation assistance to be paid from the landlord that owns the expiring BMR unit to be paid directly to the tenant in order to offset the cost of rehousing and prevent homelessness. The cost of relocation is very, very high, right? Particularly when you're a low-income tenant moving into the market rate. Some things that are commonly asked as part of application fees are, one, a first month of rent, a last month of rent, and a deposit equivalent to another month of rent. So what is commonplace in many cities is to make relocation assistance equivalent to three months of fair market rent. That's where that number comes from, and that's why it's commonly used. So we would be adding a responsibility of property owners to pay tenants three months equivalent of fair market rent if the tenant moves from their BMR unit to a market-rate unit before or after 12 months of expiration. And additionally, there is an additional month of assistance for certain special circumstance households. This is for households with disabled members or elderly members and stuff like that. In addition to this, we would be adding a responsibility of property owners to provide notice of what the new rental rate they plan to charge tenants upon expiration of the unit, so that they can adequately be informed of like what the rent increase they expect to receive and make, you know, make their decisions accordingly, as well as informing them of the rental relocation assistance that they would be entitled to if they choose to move out into the market rate out of their BMR unit. On this graph, we have an example of the 2024 Santa Clara County Fair Market rents. This is determined by HUD. What it is, is it takes unit sizes and breaks it down. What would be the kind of the adequate average rent that can be charged to these units based on the area meeting income of that county? And that's what we have in that first line there, based on bedroom size. And then we can multiply that number by three to get the three months. So that is the relocation, average relocation assistance we would expect to see based on unit size, assuming that the 2025 numbers remain the same. In this graph, we've included the comparative relocation assistance policies that were adopted by all of our neighboring jurisdictions that we studied as part of this process. I'm not going to go into every detail, but some things I wanted to kind of highlight are like the common themes that we saw throughout all the different policies, the first being the three months fair market rent plus one month of special circumstance as part of the term of assistance. This is something that seemingly all other cities, except for one, are including as their relocation assistance policies. All of them require some sort of notice to be given from the landlord to the tenant, informing them of the relocation assistance they would be entitled to. Generally speaking, the time to provide the relocation assistance is within 30 days of the tenant leaving the unit. And then something I also wanted to point out is, in particular, San Leandro's policy, which ours is heavily modeled after because it is specifically activated upon when the tenant receives a disproportionately high rental increase and is triggered when a tenant moves out of their unit. So it's very, very similar. We've proposed something that we believe is both enforceable and enactable based on that. So for staff analysis, we think that enacting these kind of dual components complements each other, right? The waitlist priority provides a long-term structural solution as it puts these low-income tenants back into a low-income unit that they can foreseeably afford for the forthcoming future, but it is dependent on new units coming available, right? So in the meantime, something like relocation assistance provides a short-term kind of emergency intervention, so that they can remain housed until the long-term solution can take effect. Pursuing both of these options would provide the most comprehensive tenant protections, but it would still be important to construct new restricted affordable housing because 114 affordable units are being lost, right, by 2040. So in order for any kind of long-term solution to fully take effect, we would need to replace these units somehow through the construction of new affordable housing. So given that, staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution as proposed to approve amendments to the BMR admin manual to create an anti-displacement policy for tenants residing in below, expiring below-market-rate units. And with that, we open it to the council for questions.
Thank you for the very comprehensive study and data on the current residents. So any question from council members? Council member Furun.
Two quick ones. First, going back to the matrix of the various different cities and the policies that they put in place. If you could throw that back up on the screen, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I've sent it to that slide, yeah.
There we go. So for the sake of clarity, under the column "activation", there are a number of cities that activate upon eviction/withdrawal. So is that a reference specifically to, you know, the deed restriction has expired and that is the point of time of withdrawal? Or is this a reference to say an Ellis Act-style eviction where the property owner has decided to go out of business?
It's closer to the second one. It's really any time that a landlord decides to withdraw their units from the housing market.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The units will not be replaced, yes.
Right, that makes, that makes a lot more sense to me. And then for the second question, when you explored initially the idea of creating incentives for developers to perhaps receive some sort of permitting or entitlement relief from the city in exchange for extending existing deed restrictions, is that something that you feel like you can continue to explore on your own as part of the housing element implementation process? Or do you need direction from us today on that?
So it's not currently included within the housing element kind of scope of activities, but if the council would like to direct that as kind of being part of our ongoing, you know, staff work plan, we can try to include that as these projects come available.
So you don't feel that that's sufficiently inside of the remit of other affordable housing preservation strategies or the rent stabilization program that we're committed to?
Councilman Furun, I think either way it works as sort of a standard operational practice. We certainly see the value of this particular incentive or item, but I think if the council wished to just voice their support in something like this, I think that's preferable for staff.
Okay.
We would be granting exceptions, right, to zoning law? So it would be helpful to have council's direction to support that, right?
Those are all my questions, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
You mentioned rent stabilization as a potential, kind of like a future policy for the city. Could you describe what a local rent stabilization program or policy or ordinance, what that would be looking like?
So there are very few that have been enacted by other cities, right? Mostly because of state law that kind of prohibits a lot of it. But what could be done for rent stabilization is building kind of off of AB 1482, to kind of saying like, okay, instead of like 5% plus CPI, perhaps maybe a lower percentage rent stabilization increase, so that we make something that's really not running a foul estate law? That could be something that we explore. But since this is not something that was legally permissible for at least the expiring BMR units, it's not something that we looked into too heavily yet.
Okay, and would this be, is this different from what people think of for rent control?
It is rent control.
It is the same, okay? Because we have brought up rent control in the past. And I was wondering if staff has some recollection of whether or not that was popularly received in Cupertino?
I don't recall.
All right, thank you.
I mean, anything we would propose, right? We would get feedback from the community and, you know, take that into account, right? As far as what gets proposed.
Okay, because like I had tried to get some discussion regarding vacancy tax. And that was... And that didn't go anywhere.
I think certainly through the mayor, if I may, I think certainly if council wished to continue exploration of this particular item, like Nikki said, we obviously have to do some outreach and get some feedback from the current environment and residents and see if there's support for something like that.
I don't think we've ever considered rent control in this community, and I'm not sure there is support for that. So it will be very contentious. So Councilmember Mohan.
Thank you for your staff report and your presentation. You stated that there are 39 units that have, that will expire next year in July of 2026, and that there are three property owners for the 39 units. Now, there has to be some urgency to doing something because they expire in 2026, right? So if we did nothing at all, what would happen?
Well, it depends, right? Because within our low-income program, we have our low-income households, and then we have our very low-income households. And we could foreseeably see maybe two different situations. For the people with slightly more means, they might relocate outside of Cupertino to a less costly area, or they, which would be displacement, right? Or they could try to remain housed in the area but spending more than half of their income towards housing, which is what we would define as being heavily, sorry, severely cost-burdened. Just neither situation is desired. And then for people with even less means, right? They would foreseeably not really have any housing to find that is affordable to their income level, and we may see people entering homelessness.
So in your staff report, you said two of the three owners were willing to extend the affordability?
Not willing.
I'm not sure what that means. And then the third one did not. So I'm wondering what will be the fate of these people come next July?
So not willing to extend. Part of our staff duties to make sure that they adequately provided noticing to these tenants involved us kind of checking to make sure that they had sent out these state-mandated sort of like forms that describe what date, you know, their units would be expiring and what the procedures, what resources are available to them. These have to be sent out at the three-year, 12-months, and six-months points from their expiration date. And if they don't send these notices out, then we can actually impose injunctive relief where we can extend the affordability restrictions based on the date when they correctly send out these notices. So when I was reviewing the notices sent out by two of these properties, we found they did not send out any notice. And so by, because of this, we were able to extend, we were able to require them to extend their affordability restriction for another two years or so.
That's good to know. So each of these tenants actually get a three-year notice, and that's legally required. If they did not send, but how do we, how are we sure they are received? If they are sent by registered email, the registered mail, does that have to be signed?
So each notice has to be noticed in a different way. That three-years one just has to be posted in a public location. The 12-months one has to be posted to their doors or hand-delivered to them, and the six-months one certified mail. But for all of them, I require them also send me a copy.
Oh, so they will be posted to the door there? So they at least are legally already know this is expiring?
Right.
So then, I think one of the two proposals was we would, if they move out within the 12 months. So that means if someone acts earlier, they don't get compensated. They should kind of incentivize them to delay until the 12 months before they're like, in order to get the assistance.
So I should add, when we talk to tenants in the BMR program, right, they don't want to leave their homes. They would prefer to remain housed. So we don't foresee people like trying to game, right, the system to try to get any kind of additional assistance. But when it comes to the relocation assistance, right, in addition to getting people rehoused, it really also kind of provides an incentive for landlords to, upon restriction, you know, of their own will, give them, well, offer them a rent that is acceptable, right, to them? That is maybe not quite as high as the market rate, but something that they will accept to remain housed, right? Because if the tenant chooses to remain in that unit for the additional 12 months, then they would potentially not have to give relocation assistance. That's the way it's written, so.
Oh, so they can give them still reduced market rate? Maybe not as low as the current?
And it's not rent, it's not rent control, because it's not allowed, but it is an incentive.
So Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, and thanks for a very comprehensive presentation. I just want to get some few facts here straight. So these landlords have met their BMR obligations, is that correct?
For their BMR requirements, their BMR agreements that were enacted in the 90s, yes, that would be correct.
That's correct. And the tenants are aware, when they rent these facilities, that they will expire, right?
Not always. So like, for example, for the two properties where they did not receive any kind of noticing, they did not know that their units were expiring until I required that this noticing be sent out.
But don't they know it will expire at some point?
No.
When they move in? They know that it's limited to 2055 years.
No, they're not informed of that until actually this notice.
Okay.
Yeah.
They were never warned?
Not until this noticing was sent out, no.
Are they, do they sign like a one-year or yearly rental agreement?
Yes, they sign yearly rental agreements once they're placed into units.
So the agreement is not forever?
Correct.
I give my time to the mayor.
Yeah, sorry.
The agreement is not forever, it's annual, it's annual agreement. And each year, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Nikki, that the renters will have to go through recertification of the salary income, make sure they meet the income restrictions.
Required restrictions, yeah.
Okay.
I would just assume that they know that this was in there, so I was kind of curious as to that. And so are we proposing these landlord owners then be forced into, I hate to say it this way, rent control when their obligations are met?
So there is no rent control, right? It would not be allowed. What this is proposing is that if these tenants end up moving from, out of their units into the market rate, that they'd be given some sort of relocation assistance to aid them, right, in that process?
By the property owners, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so you're asking the property owners to subsidize their move out of a unit in an obligation that they met with full knowledge that these, in this case, not full knowledge, but some knowledge that this good deal was going to expire at some point?
Yeah, is it, I do wonder, is it legal for the city to, because it's a goodwill we want to do, but we are forcing the property owner to pay the extra cost. Is it legal for the city to put this burden on a property owner when they have met other legal requirements to provide BMR housing?
There are, there's a statewide statute that is similar but different. So first, let me answer your question. I don't think that we can force a landlord to to pay relocation assistance when the landlord has the right to raise the rent and the tenant doesn't want to stay and pay the raised rent. They need, the tenant is responsible for their own moving costs. Although there is a state statute that says that if a landlord refuses to, doesn't want to renew a lease and is requiring a tenant to move out, then they do have to pay relocation assistance. But it's a different situation.
So with the resolution we are adopting, we are actually forcing the landlord to pay that three months relocation assistance? Wouldn't, are we allowed?
You know, I would need to look more deeply into it. I haven't researched that question, but it does seem to me to be legally problematic that we could require the landlord to pay the relocation. Maybe there is a statute?
Is there? Because it's, it's, we want to do goodwill at the cost of the landlord. So we are forcing them to subsidize below-market rate housing, which they have been providing for the last 55 years.
Right, so the relocation assistance policy we have proposed is heavily based on an existing relocation assistance policy that exists in another city, which is San Leandro's policy, which is when a tenant receives a disproportionately high rent increase, which I think they define as over 12% of their original rental rate, that upon them moving out of the unit after receiving this disproportionately high rent increase, the landlord becomes responsible for paying to them three months fair market rate as relocation assistance. So we're basing this heavily on an existing policy that another city has already enacted.
That hasn't been challenged, but someone could challenge it.
I mean.
I mean, I can kind of justify it by thinking, okay, the landlord by, in the expired unit, the landlord likely will get future income with higher rent, and maybe they can use the potential income from the future to subsidize the three-months rent. But are we legally, the city, can we force that on a private property owner?
May I ask a question? In San Leandro, is it the case that any landlord who increases rent by 12% or whatever that threshold is, is required to pay relocation assistance?
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct. In Cupertino, we don't, we haven't adopted that kind of across-the-board requirement.
Right.
And so that's why I'm thinking that I would need to look more into whether what you're proposing is legal, because you would be applying it to just landlords with expiring BMR units.
From what I'm reading on the San Leandro website, it says no, the San Leandro tenant relocation ordinance generally does not apply to deed-restricted BMR units. Just to be clear, maybe we should research that, but that's what I'm seeing on the website.
Should we go to public comments? Councilmember Mohan, you have more question?
I have one, I didn't quite finish what I was going to say. But going back to my question about the three property owners that you contacted, two extended the affordability terms, one did not. So what happens to the properties connected to that one property owner that did not respond the way the others did?
So the reason why the last, the third property owner was not required to extend their restrictions is because they did send out adequate noticing on the state-required, you know, forms, right, the three-years noticing. So they've fulfilled their obligations to notifying their tenants. And so because of that, we weren't able to impose an extension on affordability. So for those four units in the Park City Center, we expect them to be expiring in July 2026.
With no conditions, so they would be asked to leave in July 2026?
Well, they wouldn't be asked to leave, right? They would probably be invited to stay, but they would be given probably a very high rent increase when that happens.
Yeah. So I do wonder, is there any state law? Or could, if someone choose to keep, extend the below-market rate for a few more years, would the property owner maybe get some tax credit for their continued offering of the BMR unit? Of course, if they have a new project like Prometheus or the Anza Properties, if they have a new project, maybe we can exchange that they don't have to offer extra BMR by extending this unit. But I think that's something worth exploring. But are there existing state laws? They can claim tax credit in exchange for extending the lifetime of BMR units?
So that would be kind of tied into the alternative strategy that we had, which was the kind of development incentives idea, right? Trying to negotiate with these property owners to give them some sort of incentive on future development in exchange for extending affordability on these current projects. We did send out an email, right, to all these different property owners, asking them if they'd be interested in this.
Yeah, but I'm thinking, is there state law? Because the city doesn't have a lot of offer.
No.
But many of these state people, they pay taxes. Maybe they can get tax credit or breaks by extending these units?
I'm not familiar with any state program yet.
Okay, so maybe we should go to public comment. Vice Mayor, would you like your one?
Just to kind of reiterate what Councilmember Wong said about the San Leandro ordinance that they passed in 2017. Yeah, they are saying that they're exempt. Rental housing units with a recorded affordable housing regulatory agreement, those are exempt along with single-family homes. So I'm wondering if we are, like, that, it could be something that could be part of, something to protect other renters in the city from large increases in their rent. But I'm not sure we're able to, to move towards that kind of an ordinance today. And I would like to hear more about, if we did try to do this, is there any city that successfully provided this rental assistance for the BMR units? Because it doesn't seem like it's particularly fair to the owner. And alternatively, is there, does the city have the means to provide the funding to self-fund this as opposed to putting the burden on, onto the property owner?
So we explored that actually as one alternative. When we proposed that to the Housing Commission, like, how much would it cost for the city to take the lead on providing relocation assistance? And for supporting all 114 households using the average, I think of like $9,000 per unit, because the average size of a BMR unit is between one to two bedrooms, it would be a very high fiscal impact, the BMR fund, right? Close to like a million, or more than a million, yeah.
And pardon through the mayor, didn't we just encumber the BMR fund with the Mary Avenue project by several million dollars?
So you're suggesting we could fund us through BMR fund?
No.
I'm not suggesting that.
No, okay.
We spent too much.
So we should really go to public comment, but I do have one question. So you are suggesting we can give them three extra units in the waitlist? And are we, do they get these three extra units for three years in case they couldn't get it the first year, second year? Or do they only get it the first year?
It's a great question. So these three actual priority points to be replaced in the BMR waitlist, the way we've defined, you know, this category of displaced BMR tenant is someone who is or was a tenant of these BMR units within the last 12 months of the expiration. So they can apply starting now, right, for these units that are expiring in 2026, because it'll be within the 12 months. But it's is or was. So if they're not able to be immediately rehoused in that first year, they can still continue to reapply.
But they don't get those three extra points?
No, they will still, they will still get those three extra points in the next year.
But then it would have been more than 12 months?
Right, so it is or was a tenant. That's how we're defined.
So they get it forever?
Until they get rehoused.
Until they get rehoused in Cupertino?
Within our waitlist, yes.
Okay, yeah. But in some sense, this also prioritized people who already have housing over people who never had housing in BMR. Yeah, anyway, okay, so let's go to public comments.
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak in Community Hall.
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak in community hall. I see four requests to speak virtually. So we will start with Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Jan. Welcome, Jennifer.
Jennifer or Jan?
Hi, Jennifer. Sorry, I'm sorry. Hey, maybe there's another Griffin in the city. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and this is an interesting, it's kind of like a chess game or something, how do you deal with these things? I remember when the BMR programs were first started in Cupertino, because I've been coming here since two thousand and three, and the city pretty much owned everything. And now we've gone into the dilemma of we've got the thirty-year BMRs when they first came up. Now we're becoming, going back to rental stock, I guess, at some point. My first question is, are we doing something now to eliminate this in the future? You all were talking about having ninety-nine-year units. I think that is a good start, so that we're not going to run into this problem every twenty years, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, let's face it, ninety-nine years, if you have an apartment building, it's reached the end of its useful life, lifetime. Most owners will be tearing down, rebuilding. We're, we have buildings that are ten to fifteen, I mean, the Staples, the Fontana Restaurant Building was built in two thousand and five, and we're ready to tear it down, and it's only been used for four years. So the lifetime of apartment buildings is probably, I would say, sixty to seventy-five years. It, it could be less. So first, if you all could talk about what constitutes the ninety-nine year. These are rental units that are owned by private owners that own the multifamily housing, and they're, they have been given permission to, well, permission. They're, as part of the current building, they have, now they have ninety-nine-year BMRs. There, the, there's people that are on waitlists, rightfully get their placement, and they can go. I do think it's important that we warn people. Maybe the city needs to make sure that they warn people over and over again. My second question is, we have thirty-nine households that will be disrupted next summer, a year from now. We are evicting potentially a hundred families from McLaughlin Terrace. Yes, they're paying a little bit less than market rate, but we've got potentially a hundred and forty-nine families that are going to be going through disruption. I, I hope that we aren't going to be keep repeating this every ten to fifteen years. I think that the city needs to try to work with the property owners and with the tenants to make sure that we don't have mash of evictions.
Thank you.
And maybe Ellis.
You're muted. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Jan. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a resident here. First of all, I hadn't planned on speaking to the council tonight on this, but I had to speak up. First of all, I think you did an excellent job of analysis and looking at all of the different options. I think at this point, your best bet is to change the BMR manual to allow the extra points and hold off on the assistance. I think there's some legal questions. I mean, it makes you feel good if you, you know, enacted that, but I think it's a very sticky wicket. So the, you have the BMR manual under your control, there are no legal questions about that. But I have a bigger question, and that is, how are you coordinating with the other BMR units in the, in the city? What about the Westport Senior Apartments? How are you coordinating with that? The Randa, the HUD properties? It's not clear to me that being in, whether you're looking just at city-owned properties or city agreements versus the whole bigger picture of BMR housing. And what's to stand in the way of building our own Cupertino list, waitlist? At least that we might not manage it as a whole, but at least make tenants avail, aware that there are other opportunities for BMR housing in Cupertino, and how to get on the waitlist and what the situation is. I'd like to see that addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Jan. Welcome, Jan.
My name is Jan Fabry, spelled J-A-N, and my thing is fresh. I don't know where I am. So I wonder if I can get some response here. Lost my spouse after midnight today, and we were below market rate. We didn't have time to sign for both of us yet, because I saw Andy's coming. And so I am basically left without income now. I didn't take my social security, and I'm pushing seventy. So I went to office, they don't know to respond to me. They say, I said, I'm going to go to this city meeting. And then when I contacted Rice Housing, they didn't respond at two, yes. So I don't even know if you have answers for this or anybody here. But I'm just wondering, I'm in limbo, really. My rise was last year nine point nine percent and this year ten percent.
I, I think we, maybe can, can the staff reach out to the resident? Could you leave your contact so that I, we can further understand your situation?
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we need to follow up on your specific case that, yeah. Thank you for coming.
Next, we have those members of the public wishing to speak virtually, Sujata Venkateshaman, Rota Frye, Peggy Griffin, and San Ar. Welcome, Sujata.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Sujata Venkateshaman, Executive Director of West Valley Community Services. I thank the staff for a very comprehensive presentation. After listening to all your questions and your comments, I want to bring a perspective on the residents who are living in the, in BMR. As you know, BMR was first established to have folks who can live and work in Cupertino, who can age in place in Cupertino. West Valley Community Services runs our, our, um, BMR units. The units that we own are part of the BMR program, and we have done that for many years. I want you to place consideration on the residents. There are recommendations for changing the BMR manual with waitlist. The whole consideration that staff is bringing and the Housing Commission brought is a clear definition of protection for the displaced tenants. Someone talked about they are rent burdened. They're not paying only fifty percent, nearly all of these residents who are getting support from West Valley Community Services are paying eighty percent of their income towards rent even now, because they are low income. Their jobs are not what you typically are thinking about. So I want you to keep that in mind. They're older adults, people with disabilities, and families with minor children. This mandate of a fair relocation is only for three months. As you know, these apartment units will become fair market. And if you're thinking from the landlord's perspective, they can recoup that money. So I really want you to think from the resident's perspective and maybe come up with creative ideas. And I know as council, you have to think of legal obligation, but keep that in mind. And I strongly believe that we need to have strong noticing reinforcement. And many of you talked about, why weren't they informed? Imagine when you need housing today, and you got your name up on the waitlist, and this is what you were looking for, because your job, you need to be closer. You're not going to think about ninety-nine, fifty years of BMRD. They won't even remember that. So if you think about the residents, keep that in mind when you decide this. Staff have a very good proposal, which the Housing Commission supported that. So I hope you will, you will vote with compassion and thinking about the low-income folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. This underscores why we need to have permanent affordable housing, for one thing. For another thing, we need to make sure we make judicial use of our BMR fund. And I've studied the BMR fund, and it has an insane amount of overhead. And frankly, if it were a charity, I wouldn't donate to it when you've got, you know, like, half of your revenues going toward administration. It just, it just doesn't make sense. So I think there's a couple of things here. Oh, yeah, the other thing is, we got to do something for the terrorists, the folks of the terrorists. If indeed this deal goes through, and I hope you certainly can block it, because they're looking at ten, fifteen, twenty percent rent. That's just to say in Cupertino, and certainly they're going to do this, or walk to K through twelve, which is within a half a mile for all of the sixty-seven students who are there now and potentially in, in the future. But let's look at the property owners who have these BMR units. They made a deal with the city. They knew that, that, they knew when they were going to get their market rate back, and I think it's unfair to, to burden them. It, it, it's just not right, whether, you know, we need to keep, we need to keep our promises. But the other thing I'm thinking about is that the way that this BMR stuff works is that landlords are now being incentivized to charge market rate rent. Why? Because once you get, once they exit BMR, they've got to go to market rate, right? If they don't go to market rate, well, or if they set, set the rate lower than market rate, what happens is, is that they are, they're going to be bound to AB fourteen eighty-two. That says you can only raise it, I think Santa Clara County is now like eight some odd percent, eight and a half percent or so per year. So what I'm wondering is, is if there's a way that we can find a middle ground for the, these apartment owners and say, let's just say, I'm just going to throw out some wild numbers. Let's say the rent right now is like five hundred a month, okay? But the market rate is a thousand a month. Obviously, we know that these numbers are wrong, but just, just bear with me here. So let's say that we said, we, we told the apartment companies that they can actually not have to charge market rate, but they could raise the rent more than eight percent if they so desired in the future. So that way, let's say they don't want to remodel right away. They don't want to put those investments in, but they can say, look, you know, BMR renter, we're going to, we want to raise the rent, let's say, to six hundred dollars a month, and we'll hold that for a year, because maybe they're not ready to remodel. Maybe they'll remodel a year from now. So that, at least, we're not shutting those down completely. But at the same time, it gives the property owner the flexibility a year later to go to full market rate. Because if they discount it, they will not be able to go to full market rate because of AB fourteen eighty-two. So I, I see Ray nodding, so I think you got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rota. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Councilman, Vice Mayor Mauer, councilmembers and staff. Please listen to what Rota Frye just said. Flexibility pays off both for the property owner and the city, so please consider that. Also, I wanted to talk about creating a policy to use the BMR funds to buy land. That can be used to build BMR units that are forever units, essentially a land trust. Units that can never be required to be returned to market rate prices. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final speaker is San Ar. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. I'd like to share a few thoughts on this topic. Firstly, I want to say that rent control does not work. Imposing rent control will basically accelerate the sale of the property, causing the property to be redeveloped into, you know, Class A housing that is going to be market rates at today's rates. And even the so-called BMR units is not going to provide you the same level of affordability that a Class B or Class C rental housing unit may have provided. Classic case in point is McLaughlin Terrace versus any of the BMR units that the new housing being constructed would offer. They will never be able to compete with McLaughlin Terrace on rents and affordability. So I urge the city to not consider rent control. Secondly, a number of residents, including seniors, are landlords as their sole source of income in retirement and rely on that income for their living. And so you need to factor in that you've got a diverse population, many of whom may actually own their majority of life savings in real estate as their source of retirement savings and income. So, so please do not attempt to apply socialism on the backs of those that have saved and invested wisely and are providing responsible housing. What I do think you can provide, and many other cities have done, is a study into banning algorithmic rent-setting software such as RealPage. Multiple cities have initiated either ordinances or are doing studies on banning RealPage. There is a DOJ lawsuit against RealPage that I urge all councilmembers and in-staff to look into. And you should be looking to set a future agenda item, that is, a study session to look into the use of RealPage and other similar dynamic rent-setting software within the city of Cupertino and options to ban the use of RealPage in Cupertino, as has been done by Berkeley. Now, there is a lawsuit backed by RealPage against Berkeley, so you should be aware of that, and maybe the CAO may have an opinion on that. But hopefully, there is going to be precedent to this in the matter of the DOJ lawsuit and other cities that have been ahead of us in this process. So, so please think out of the box. Socialism never works. But what does work is smart policies that limit greedy landlords that are attempting to use algorithmic software that leads to these ten percent raises that we're talking about. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak. And I do want to remind you that we are pushing the eleven o'clock time limit.
May I say something quickly? One of the speakers mentioned AB fourteen eighty-two, and I just looked it up, and I have looked at the statute before. I can't at this moment on the dais parse it, it's somewhat complicated, but it may be that a twelve percent rent increase would fall into the no-fault eviction category, which might require the landlord to provide some minimum relocation assistance. And so I just suggest that we take, I take time over the next weeks to analyze that statute before.
And if that's true, that means we, if, even if we don't adopt any policy, the assistance would apply anyway.
Correct. Some cities have adopted policies that require greater assistance, but AB fourteen eighty-two is a floor that applies across California.
Okay, so it's almost eleven. I believe we need a motion to extend the meeting.
To extend the meeting and to identify what you're, the reason to continue the meeting.
We extend it to eleven twenty. Let's try to get it done in twenty minutes.
A second half. I'm in support of getting item sixteen completed tonight.
Okay, so let's vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fruen.
As a point of order, the, the rules manual requires that we identify specifically what it is we intend to complete.
So we want to complete this item.
Okay.
Item eleven.
Did you say?
Item fifteen.
Sixteen, I believe.
Oh, sorry, fifteen.
Oh, we'd make the amendment that we'd like to continue item numbers. Is it sixteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Oh, you're trying to come up with fifteen? I'm trying to come up with sixteen.
Yeah, we want to finish item fifteen. Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Fruen.
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so we will, so there were two options. So one option is the three-point priority, and that, we have control of the menu. So one option is the three-point priority, and that we have control of the menu. And the second option, likely we would need some input from the city attorney to come back. And then for the first option, I think there were some questions from the public that I would like to get answers on. Jim Bedore asked about the waitlist, how to coordinate them, because I believe Westport has their own waitlist, Veranda has their own waitlist, so the city can only put priority on our own waitlist. Could we coordinate so that the expired residents could get priority in other waitlist?
So that's a great question.
Or can we facilitate that?
For already developed, right, already built-out projects, that would be difficult because that would require kind of renegotiating, right, their, their client intake, right, strategies. But for upcoming projects, yes, we can negotiate them because their BMR, you know, agreements are not yet settled, right? They're not yet executed. So for example, like, say, like, the Rise Valco, we can, we can negotiate into their BMR agreement to have priority replacement of BMR.
Yeah, but then those won't happen in time. So even if there is already an agreement, is it a possibility to talk to them to consider expired residents? We have not talked to them.
We can try.
So we could talk to them to see if that might be possible, right? And then we can also at least inform them, here are the other waitlists you can apply. So have we do, done that?
We have not done that with the two existing developers you're, you're referencing that being Westport and also the Veranda, but we can certainly reach out and see if there's interest there.
Yeah, but I think, two questions. So one, I don't know what other separate waitlists are there in Cupertino. These are two separate ones, there might be more. So then there's, the other question is, have we done our part to inform all these residents with expiring units? Here are the other waitlists, maybe two, maybe five, you could apply for, because the information is not always readily available for the low-income residents. So how have we informed them? So could we do something to give them more information about how to apply?
Sure, we can definitely work on that. The other, the two properties that are not, with units are not in the city's portfolio, we have staff that were, that participated in their lottery system. And based on the number of individuals on their waitlist, I, I, I'm confident saying that enough outreach was provided for those two units, but certainly we, we, we can look at other, other ways to coordinate that effort moving forward.
Okay. How, how many other waitlists are there that's separate?
I believe it's only two that I'm aware of.
Only two, okay.
The, the, the properties that have like waitlists outside of the BMR program, typically they have something special about them that kind of like separates them from the, kind of like the general population. So for example, Westport and the Veranda, they're senior-only, right, apartment? So not just anyone can apply to them.
Yeah, but our expiring ones, you, your data says there's two-thirds are seniors, right?
So we can, so we can do this, right? But like, like I mentioned, like, we, priority takes place on actions that can foreseeably aid all of them, and then the next, right, would be ones that can help most of them. So yes, that is something we can explore as well. Yeah.
Okay, and then what other question we have? Oh, the possibility Rota brought up of potentially the landlord can delay their remodeling so that their rent does not go right up to the full market rate value right away, and, but then to allow them time to scale it up. Is that something that's possible? That's also, yeah, a legal question.
I don't think it's legally possible, and my experience with commercial landlords is they, they probably would not be willing to do that voluntarily.
Yeah. And although, so I'd like to clarify, clarify one thing. The landlord that we are talking about are in most, who are in this are inclusionary units, which means they are usually 10, 15% of an entire project.
Yes.
So these are not small landlords that we usually see that it might be, they own only a two or three units, that's all their investment. So these are landlords who have their other 85% that has been earning market rate rent over the years. And so I hate to put the burden on a property owner, but these are large property owners who probably would be able to afford some extra, the assistance for, yeah. So any other question from the community? Do we want to maybe entertain a motion? We have 13 minutes left.
Yeah. I can take a stab at the motion. I move that we approve the staff report with the condition that the displacement, anti-displacement relocation assistance be considered at a future time, and we move forward with the waitlist procedure.
So we would bring it back with, in a future agenda?
Yeah, because we don't have that information right now.
Okay. Second that, Vice Mayor.
May you second that?
Okay, yeah, I second it.
Okay. I just want to bring up, there was some concern about the BMR fund. We did allocate 3 million to the Mary Avenue project, so that's going to an actual project. And 1,083,200 to the Eden Wolf Road project, so that's another project that's in the works, that we're going to have something solid to show for it. And the BMR fund had a balance of 4,764,700 before this, these, these funds were allocated. So you have almost, almost 700,000 remaining in the BMR fund that it could be a consideration when this item comes back, if that could be put to use for-
But I believe the staff reserved that for the administration overhead for the next, initially the staff reserved the 1,700,000.
Through the mayor. With regards to the administration, it can be from the general fund. So my, my personal preference with regards to the, the BMR fund is that we have something solid to show for it, that we're doing what the residents say, such as buying property and, and investing in it. Thank you.
So just want to clarify, the Mary Avenue housing, it was, it's still a rental, right? And it also has 99-year limit?
That's correct, so-
It's not forever?
It's as good as forever is the term we like to use, right? So any project produced after 1999, right, their affordability restrictions are for a term of 99 years, which as mentioned by one of the public speakers, is considered as good as forever because it would last longer than the, the life of the property, right? Substantially, some point within that 99 years, it would need to be substantially remodeled or redone in some way that would create a new, right, BMR restriction on top of that.
Okay. Okay, any other comment? We have 10 minutes, yeah.
Mayor, may I have clarification? Is the resolution being adopted as is, as staff recommends, to move forward with, as Councilmember Mohan said, with the waitlist procedure, with the condition that the anti-displacement relocation assistance be considered at a future time?
Yeah, so it's not, the resolution is not adopted entirely, so only the, only the priority for waitlist is included.
So the resolution is amended, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See. Can we be, let me see, can we be more specific about that? So it's, so in terms of the resolution, let me just share. So it seems the first four items are about the waitlist. The first three items are about the waitlist. The number four, definition of displaced below market rate. This is just a definition, so I think that can stay. And then, this is, number five is about relocation assistance. So we are, so we don't include this portion? And number six, tenant displacement noticing requirement, I think that's, that will stay, right? Noticing requirement, it would stay. Enforcement failure to comply, I think that will stay. This is not new, right? These are, I think it's existing legal requirements, so why are we amending this portion?
Sorry, those are actually new sections I've included.
Oh, I thought the legal requirement is existing.
So the, the three new requirements that were added are the, the definition section, right, to define what is a displaced tenant household, and then also the noticing requirements and the enforcement sections are both new. So the noticing requirement is tied to the relocation assistance, the idea being that if there's a new resource, right, available to these tenants, that the landlord send them some sort of notice that informs them like what they may be entitled to. And that's, that's a typical requirement of any kind of relocation assistance policy. And then number seven is enforcement of that, so like what happens if, if they don't send them notice, or if they, or if they fail to provide them relocation assistance within that 30 days?
So number five, six, and seven are related to relocation assistance?
That's correct.
So if we are, we would like to consider this later, we should remove these three sections from the resolution?
Right. Those three items would be connected all to relocation assistance, and then everything in four and above is more about the priority replacement and other things.
So with your motion would include the number one to four in the resolution? And then we will concede, we will bring back five, six, or seven later with more information about, from the city attorney about the legal, yeah?
Ramifications.
Yeah, ramifications of these.
I, I agree.
Okay. So that's amended, yeah?
To remove sections five, six, and seven and bring back later with additional information? Okay.
Yes. Okay. Any more comment? Then we can vote. Am I missing any? Roll call.
Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
No.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Wong voting no.
Okay, so we didn't get to item 16. That will be later. Yeah. Okay, thank you. The meeting is adjourned.